There's no space in there where you can see like how many people are. You can't when you're on the screen.
Well, all right. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lewisburg area Board of School Directors. Do you have please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for joining us this evening. A couple of quick announcements, we do have all board members present this evening. One joining via Zoom, Dr. Enzicker Fosero is joining us via Zoom and the rest of us are present in the room. So we do have all board members. The board did meet prior to this evening's meeting, an executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss two legal matters, a revised personnel report, and a school safety and security update. With that, we will move on to the recognition of distinguished individuals. John, if you want to pull up.
Sure. Which one would you like to go first?
The math counts.
Math counts, okay.
So we are happy to share that our Donald H. Icorn Middle School math counts team was very successful this year. And we want to draw some attention to our students who participated. We can advance, John. Okay, Alexi Rosenberg in eighth grade, he took 43rd place. Julia Monaco in seventh grade. Ethan Pilling, seventh grade. Teddy Holm, eighth grade. And Ms. Lauren Peck is their faculty sponsor. As well as Nathan Ryan, the team coach. So, um, coaches, sponsors, anybody want to speak on behalf of the team?
Sure, thank you board for inviting us and honoring these terrific mathletes. We are so proud of our team. They practiced every single week on Zoom on Thursday afternoons this year. Often logging in after a day of remote instruction or Alexi from the hallway during the play rehearsal or after school sports. So their commitment has just been terrific and just tremendous. They competed first this year at a regional competition and then they went on to a chapter invitational and then they all moved on to states. So we just could not be more proud of them and their fellow teammates. And a huge thank you for the time and the energy and the talent of Nathan Ryan. He is a humble person, so I know he will kind of shrug off maybe some of the public praise, but we could not have done this without his expertise and his time. So a huge thank you to Nathan and just a huge congrats to this awesome group of kids. We're so proud of them.
Anybody else? Do we have any of the students on with us this evening? Can't see all the windows, so if any of the students or Ryan, anything else to add?
One for public speaking, but it's been a great, it's been a great fun working with them this summer, this year, in the last couple of years. It's been great watching them grow as, as young mathematicians. And I look forward to continuing this kind of work either with them in high school, if they're moving on to high school, or in the middle school next year.
Thank you very much.
I think Alexi was going to say something, but maybe not.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, yeah, I just, I don't know, I really love the math counts thing and I really appreciate you like letting it. And it's, I don't know, it's, it's been really fun. I'm definitely gonna miss it next year when I go to high school. So, yeah, just thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the TSIU state competitors.
So we have some more students to honor. These students were from Lewisburg area high school. And they participated in the 2021 State Technology Student Association Competition. They took 10th place for digital video production and the team included Jeben Lovre, Tula Locke, Andrew Nichols, Susan Bo, and Sophia Zoo. Okay, and their advisor is Mr. Jeremy Lovre. And we, um, I don't know if anybody's on from this group, Mr. Lovre?
Mr. Lovre is not on, but Sophia and I are.
Okay, well.
Hi.
Tell us about the experience.
Well, it was all remote this year, so it was quite interesting. Usually we go to like an in-person conference up in near Philadelphia. And we hang out, we do our events there, but this year we had to all meet on Zoom and we planned out our, our digital video. And it was, it was definitely an interesting experience.
Yeah, I would definitely agree. This year was actually my first year doing it. And I think the virtual experience was really rewarding. I think Mr. Lovre was and is a great advisor. And all my teammates were really, really engaged and really fun to work with this year.
Thanks so much for sharing the experience and congratulations.
Thank you.
One more shout out and this goes to Andrew Nichols, who also qualified for Nationals. He took second place in music production. So congratulations to you, Andrew, for that accomplishment as well.
Thank you again.
Well, thank you very much for everyone for joining and for sharing some of your experiences with us. So again, congratulations. We'll move on to the next section of our board meeting, the citizens comments to the board on agenda items. John, do we have any?
We currently do not have any comments to the board on agenda items. For those of you at home, if you would like to make a comment to the school board, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Scroll down and click on the Survey Monkey link, fill in your name, address, and comment for the board, and we'll read it later on in the meeting. Back to you, Mr. Fitzer.
Thanks, John. All right, we'll move on to board representatives comments. George, I'm gonna start with you tonight.
Perfect, thank you. I will let you know quickly that all the ducklings, eight of them, hatched, were released to the wild. That took place yesterday. We had actually a really big day yesterday at the middle school with the service learning project. Where nearly 400 kids and 40 staff members took the kids to various locations around the community to get some meaningful work done. Some of the highlights were cleanup around the BB, the Buffalo Valley Rec Authority, doing some paintings, landscaping, some weeding. Nobody came to my house to weed, I would have appreciated that. The wetlands was a focus for seventh graders where they built bat houses and birdhouses and hung them up in the wetlands, took inventory, made sure that the trees that they planted are, are healthy. And another big one was the redoing of the dragon path. If anyone has walked the back way between the Pauling Complex and the middle school, the dragon footprints have been feeding. And I believe that was Abby Wetzel's senior project once upon a time. And so now it's, it's been renovated and, and enhanced. And so I'm really grateful to Mrs. Van Bussker who took the lead on all, arranging all of the opportunities for the kids yesterday. After things were arranged, then passing it on to each grade level team to make decisions about, for kids to choose what they wanted to do and, and how to go about making those things happen, make sure that we had the proper tools and materials and things like that. So I'm really grateful, it was, it was a really great day. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things from Lindtown, winding down the year and a lot of activities that are firing back up that we're excited about. Finally getting to be back around people a little bit, which is really nice. So the Dragon Dash and Field Day coming up. We also have a fourth and fifth grade string and band concert that's gonna happen outside on the Lindtown Playground on June 7th at six o'clock. But then the one thing I wanted to highlight for you tonight, our two teachers at Lindtown, Cindy Kostic and Michelle Rosenberg. Cindy is our math extensions teacher and also teacher of the gifted. And Mrs. Rosenberg is our reading specialist now, she's moved there from fourth grade. They both came to me end of March, excuse me, beginning of March, end of February, beginning of March, and mentioned that April was both National Math and Poetry Month. And so they wanted to do something in conjunction, sort of building wide, climate building. And so what they came up with was a couple of different options to focus on math and poetry. And so in the three weeks of April, they did different activities throughout the building on the morning announcements. In the first week, they did math is everywhere and students searched for and submitted pictures of examples of math in their everyday life. And I think Mr. Fairchild has a picture there. The kids were able to submit these on canvas and then the teachers printed them and posted them up on the wall in the, in the building for everybody to see. The second week, they did estimation jars. So candy filled estimation jars traveled around the classroom and students could view the jars up close, receive clues, and then make realistic and strategic guesses rather than just wild conjuring. And the winners from each grade level got to keep the jar.
Nice.
And then in week three, guess my number. And each morning on the announcements, Mrs. Kostic would give a new clue about a specific number. And the students had to collect those clues throughout the course of the week and submit their answers again on canvas. And then everybody with the correct answer was entered into a prize drawing at the end of the week. At the same time, poems were being posted all around the school cafeteria, book homes, near the library, et cetera. Students collaborated on wish poems where every student in the room took the line, the line of a poem that began with "I wish" and then wrote whatever they wanted. And then those went together to form a class poem that Mrs. Rosenberg read over the loudspeaker each morning to the whole school as well. And then the third week, they did poem in a pocket day. And small poem sized, pocket sized poems were distributed for the students to carry around in their pockets and read. So both of these things went over really well at the building. Both the teachers and students were super excited about them. And both of these teachers just want to make it even bigger next year. And I told them to go for it because Mr. Wetzel's gonna be in charge. So just something new, something fun, something organic that came from the staff at the building. And I think they did a really excellent job with it. So if you see them, make sure you say congratulations. Mr. Will?
What'd you call that, wild conjuring?
Conjuring, conjecture.
Yes, yes, I think that's a third grade math standard. So we were working in that direction. So good evening, I've got a few interesting things to share with you tonight. Last week on Thursday, we and some other buildings in the district participated in Mental Health Awareness Day. One of the things I really want to highlight for you, I want to give some special thanks to Kelly Mullen, who my guidance counselor, and Ashley Diggins, who's a first grade teacher, who's really embraced the social and emotional learning side of things. When they heard about this day, they got together and said, we'd love to go into classrooms and create a specialized lesson for that day for every class in the school. And so they did. And it was just amazing to be able to go in and watch the students as they were, you know, teaching ways for them to deal with their emotions and how to calm themselves down. And then, you know, each student got sort of what three things would you do to be able to help calm yourself down? And they're posted up all in the hallways throughout the school. But even just talking to kids days later that they're remembering some of these things and even students are, you know, have already continued to use those strategies on a daily basis. So again, special thanks to, to Kelly and to Ashley for helping to coordinate that. Also want to give some thanks to our second grade team and in particular Melissa Herb for coordinating the Janet Weiss Children's Hospital Donation Drive. We had 428 items that were collected from our second grade students. And all this will go directly to the hospital for any, any children that are staying there. So they have some things to help to occupy their time and make them feel a little more normal while they're in an abnormal world like at the hospital. But it was, it was great to see the kids participate in that and they really connected with that community service project. And the last two things I want to share with you are just some of the strange things that you never think as, as an elementary principal, you're gonna encounter in a given day. So earlier this week, I had a kindergartner who had left me a note in the morning and asked me to come down and talk to him. A few weeks ago on St. Patrick's Day, I always like to play up the day for the kids because they get all dressed up and they do these things. And some teachers even tip over desks in their room and pretend that leprechauns have come in and invaded the school. So I always tell the kids that I sometimes see leprechauns in the hallway and I try to catch them and I, you know, kind of play this out. And, you know, of course it goes away until next year, except for this one kindergartner. He's built a leprechaun trap. And he would like to know where the leprechaun is at in the school because he wants to set his leprechaun trap. And I went down to talk to him and he was really set on this. So I had to come up with a very creative way to explain that I'm not quite sure where the leprechaun goes and all this stuff. It blew me away that this little five-year-old, all these weeks later, after St. Patrick's Day, still had this in his mind. So that was great. This past Wednesday, I get called out to kindergarten recess because there's a bat on the playground. So I go out there and the bat's laying flat on the ground. And there's 15 to 20 kindergartners surrounding this bat. And there's little pieces of mulch around it, like a, like, like you put up a, for a wet spot on the floor, like, don't go here because you're gonna hurt this thing. And they're all surrounding it. And of course I get called, the thing looks like it's, it's dying, to be quite honest with you. And so I'm supposed to go get a shovel because the custodian's not there and I'm supposed to remove the bat. So I go get a shovel and then all the guys turn to me, what are you gonna do with the bat? I'm gonna take him to the field so he can get better. So we move all the kids away and I go and I pick up the bat and the thing flops over. And after about three tries, I get it up and I take him up to the field where he can get better. So for one day I was Batman. Who's next, Mr. Wetzel, are you next?
I'll try to follow.
Good luck. Talk about wild conjuring.
Thank you, Mr. Will. Um, coming up to the high school on Monday, May 24th, Sun Tech is doing a previewing day. And it's something they've kind of gone back and forth with. It, it's been very effective for our students to be able to go over, meet their instructor to follow up for the following year, some of their classmates and just get a feel for the structure of Sun Tech, for the building and the way it's run. Which I think is a big thing our students are nervous about and have some anxiety with when they make that decision to go there. And so it is awesome, they've been able to put together a program with some alterations from previous years. But we're excited for our students to go over. They're gonna spend two hours there with, all the sending schools are sending their kids. So they'll meet who their classmates will be next year and have a chance for a question and answer with the counselors there and Jen Hain. And it's just a nice way to kind of alleviate some of their fears and some of their worries as they go over. And really I think it starts that interest and excitement going for next year already for them. So we're looking forward to that opportunity with the, for our students. And the other thing I wanted to share, it's amazing, it's kind of weird this year since we're going to mid-June. We're winding down with athletics, but yet it's still, we have a month to go. So we are entering the, we've had some senior days for the sports. And as we look to districts starting next week for most of our sports, tennis, we already had Evan Chichini was district champion in singles for tennis. But it's kind of starts that roller coaster of emotions at the high school with senior days where they start to realize some of these chapters are closing. Yes, they're excited for the things to come, but you're really, it's kind of, I feel like senior days when you start to feel those emotions from families that are at the events, from the students, from their classmates. So we've started that roller coaster, but we are excited. In terms of athletics, our teams are really across the board, peaking at the right time. Everything seems to be clicking, so it's really awesome to see that and they're excited that they've been able to have their season and looking forward to the postseason. And then as we start to plan some of those things, we're able to do now to, to kind of close out these chapters and celebrate all the things our students have done.
Spolastic scrimmage finished up this week. I believe they're going to start airing, it might be as soon as next week. Mr. Krieger hadn't gotten the actual dates, but we'll send that along when we, when we know for certain. Had the opportunity on Monday to come in and spend some time while the kids were competing. And they just, you know, it always blows my mind of the knowledge that they have. And, you know, I don't want to give away the results or anything, but when you consider, we don't even have a club for this, this is just kids, you know, who had volunteered and said they would be interested, they don't do any prep for it. And they're going against some kids and some teams that are nationally ranked that go to tournaments and competitions. It just, it blows my mind of how poised they are. It was fascinating to watch, I've had the opportunity to go up to Scranton when they filmed it in the studio at WBIA and to see them be able to kind of flip and do it remotely this year and, and still be able to offer those kids, even though it's a different experience, a great experience with them and watching their excitement with it. So again, I know those days will pass it on. As Mr. Wetzel said, you know, it's the end of the year here starts to wrap up. And we have Foreign Language Honor Society induction next week. We've set the date and mailing the invitations and acceptance into National Honor Society here coming up. Yesterday, we gave the seniors their caps and gowns. And you want to talk them like about a moment when it all of a sudden hits them that wow, this is real, like you could really see it, you know, from the kids and from some certain parents that, you know, that wow, this is, this is really, you know, coming to a close. So it's just exciting that they get to participate in some of the normal activities that they would at the end of the year, especially knowing, you know, how last year ended. And we did, you know, I think a very good job under the circumstances recognizing that for them to truly be able to experience some of those things is really special, I think, for them.
Thank you. Thanks for all the updates. We will move into our board action under old business. Our first item is the Chromebook pilot quotes.
So we have for the board this evening, three quotes from Trox, SHI, and GCI on Chromebooks. The, the full quotes are included along with the protection plans here for your review. There's an outline in the chart here of what the difference is between the Chromebooks themselves in price, the protection plans available, and the OS management license that also needs to be purchased for that. SHI is priced in the middle, you can see there, it's not the lowest quote, but it does offer, as all of them do, a three-year protection plan, but this also has a two-year extended warranty. So we would like the board's direction to which quote we would like to move forward with.
Motion to approve SHI. We're doing this because we expect these to be on a four-year replacement cycle, right? Yeah, that makes sense. It's for what, $1,000 more? That's like, you know, just a few machines worth of, of potentially getting a replacement, right?
I'm sorry, I already gave the math.
Oh, sorry. So it's only $1,000 more, but in that, that fourth and fifth year, you could have greater utilization if it's just a small, you know, you know, a cracked screen or something like that, right? You're gonna be able to get a replacement or get it repaired rather than having to scrap it.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that's worth it because we know that that happens.
Yeah, and what's nice would be the, the warranty is that it covers just about everything. So if water does happen to get spilled on it or whatever, it's covered, unlike what we currently have.
So we have a motion to approve the SHI quote, moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman, and the other discussion. Hearing none, John, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure thing. Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enzicker Fosero?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, John. Our next item is the PSBA board resolution. We have talked about this a couple of times in previous meetings. I had included the PSBA resolution in email previously several weeks ago to the board. So we had all seen it then. I apologize, it was uploaded then. If you refresh, it should show up on your screens now as well. So John, if you want to pull that up.
Sure.
So again, standard, just what PSBA, what the resolution, what PSBA had presented. So it's there in front of you, like we had talked in previous meetings. So per the direction of the board, kind of bring that back for a vote now. So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, second?
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do this by roll call vote, please, John?
Sure. Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
No.
Mr. Fitzer?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enzicker Fosero?
No.
And Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay, hang on, I gotta do math.
You're good at that.
I hope so, okay. Okay, the vote passes five to four, so that's a yes.
All right. We will move on to board action under new business. The election of the CSIU Board of Directors. In front of each of you, we have the blue sheet. If we could just take a moment to write your name at the top, select. We have a slate of candidates being brought forth before us. So there's three options to vote. We could each take a moment, fill that out, and then, John, we read them aloud.
Oh, I was gonna say, do we?
Yeah.
We typically do, right?
Sure, yeah, and Mrs. Moser will read them aloud, so sure, pass them down when you're done.
Thank you.
See, this is why you actually can't leave. I mean.
Hey Paula, how tall is Mr. Popowitz?
He's tall though, isn't he?
Don't feel bad, Jeremiah, I'm not on the level either.
But at least it's on the screen. Yeah.
Ready when you are.
Do you need to give me the name first or do I take them in your order?
Take them in the order you have them.
All right, Mrs. Brousse votes in favor of the slate of candidates. Mr. Heath votes in favor of the slate of candidates. Mr. Fetter votes in favor of the slate of candidates. Dr. Jablonsky in favor of the slate of candidates. Mr. Rowe in favor of the slate of candidates. Ms. Stanton in favor of the slate of candidates. Dr. Zimmerman in favor of the slate of candidates. And Mrs. Clark in favor of the slate of candidates.
All right, we will submit those into the CSIU then.
Thanks, you guys.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Mary Ann, for your willingness to continue that role.
I love it, thank you so much for letting me do it.
Oh, yes. The, Dr. Enzicker Fosero, who's joining us via Zoom. Forgot about that. Jared, did you get a chance to review those, the slate of candidates? Do you vote to approve the slate, not approve the slate, or approve them with the exceptions of any names?
Sorry, I approve this late too.
Thank you. All right. So all of those will be submitted to the CSIU then. We'll move on to the next item, the exception to policy 438, sabbatical leave.
So we're coming forward to the board to ask for an exception to this policy since the sabbatical request is coming after the deadline in board policy. The nature of the sabbatical was discussed in executive session.
So moved, second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Ms. Stanton, any discussion? John, roll call vote, please.
Sure thing. Let's see here, Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enzicker? Dr. Unzeker Fosero.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Brous.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item, exception to policy 707, the use of school facilities. Dr. Palachow.
So we are asking for another exception to policy 707 for Milton Area School District to use our Pauling Complex. They're currently under construction. The athletic directors have arranged it so that it's not conflicting with any of our use for the school or any of the community.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion?
Do we incur any additional facility, you know, like cleanup fees or any, anything like that? No, we don't.
Not really because it's just, you know, concessions or anything.
Yeah, okay.
They're just practicing like our guys do.
Right, that makes sense.
What's the length of time?
It was for the season. Yeah, so this is coming as an exception. It's coming as a retroactive exception.
I didn't even notice them.
Any other discussion? John, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Mr. Fetzer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Fosero.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Brous.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. The next item is the contractual administrator's compensation. Again, before us, we have the list of the employees and also the salary compensation, the increases to the compensation. Do I ever hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Brous. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, John.
Certainly. Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yeah.
Dr. Unzeker Fosero.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Brous.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is the transferred, to transfer technology technicians to central office functions support staff group.
So we're asking the board if we can take the technology technicians and move them under the support staff agreement for central office staff. That is where we set the wage based on the experience and training that the candidate has as opposed to a set wage.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, I believe, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the high school disc golf installation. Dr. Palachow, any?
I'm sorry. So this is, thanks of the Green Dragon Foundation, they have agreed to fund this project. This is for a disc golf course to be installed at the high school. Currently, we have a portable disc golf and it falls over. It's a little cumbersome. We'd like to put a permanent structure in. The teachers requesting this did walk the grounds with Mr. Galagos to make sure that it wouldn't interfere with any future projects that we have potentially down the road. If tennis courts appear on, in our athletics complex, one or two of the courses would have to be moved or extensions that they're going to have in the ground will have to be moved. It does require for us to drill the holes or dig the holes with an auger and put cement in to keep it permanent, but that wouldn't interfere with any future construction that happens. We'll just have to rearrange the course.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion?
Kids were all over Bucknell's campus playing this golf during the pandemic. This is awesome.
All right, John, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Fosero, who may have dropped off the call. Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Brous.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item is the use of copyrighted dragon logo.
So it came to our attention that a local vendor who is making signs for graduation yard signs that parents can purchase is using our logo, which is a copyrighted logo. It's without the board's permission, this wouldn't be something that they would be able to do. So we're asking the board's permission on behalf of this vendor who has a cease and desist order currently in place to be able to go ahead and proceed with his manufacturing of these signs so that parents can purchase them for their children.
Have we done this before?
This is the first time that we've acted upon the copyright of our dragon logo, but we did copyright it after a previous incident.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion?
Did you say that the signs are for purchase?
I know, I literally was like, what?
Don't they already get, don't they already get signed for free?
Yeah, I was just, why, why is this person doing that?
They did them last year with photographs, so I wonder if they're just offering that as a.
Yeah, he, he did it last year during the pandemic to, you know, honor seniors. Parents could make a purchase with their kid's picture on it. The signs you're thinking of that are out front here don't have pictures. It's just a general, they don't have a logo or anything. They're just green and white. These are, you know, specifically created with the logo, with the student's picture or, you know, depending on what the parents want, so that they can put that in their front yard.
Is it for profit?
Um, I don't, I.
Yeah.
It's a private business.
Yeah, it's a line of business. I mean, I don't think he's raking in tons of money or anything.
This individual actually too, and I don't know that, we also probably two or three years ago had to reach out to ask them to not sell, take photos and sell them from our sporting events.
Oh.
I remember that in policy.
I mean, is this something we actually want to talk about a little more?
I thought it was, I, so I thought, when you said that, I thought it was the same, I thought we approved those last year. Or, I mean, I thought someone did, not us as the board. I didn't realize it was a policy that the board had to approve because I had seen those during, when we didn't have graduation.
So last year, we always get the signs from the village realtor that has the kids' names on it.
Right.
Last year, because of not having our typical end of the year, the district paid, the high school, out of our budget, paid Lewisburg Studio, who takes all of our students' senior photos for the yearbook. And so they had offered those last year. This individual then just, and it didn't have the kid's picture, it was the logo and the name that they also, they did it for a few of different districts. It was, I saw it advertised like on Facebook or somewhere that they did. So we are still doing the Realtor ones this year.
Would this have been better as like a PSA or Green Dragon Foundation organized thing? So that it was, you know, that they were purchasing it and it was some kind of either fundraiser or it would just.
Yeah.
This is parents direct to vendor and maybe it would be a better idea.
Yeah, I, this person has not reached out to the high school at all regarding.
I don't, so several years ago, John, five years ago, six years ago.
About five.
The district, the copyright on the logo, previously had not been copyrighted. So I'm not sure if many people know that it's copyrighted. I'm not sure how many other local districts have a copyright on their logo. I believe the mentality five, six years ago was to prevent any sign to make it look like it was school-sponsored or school-affiliated, even though it's, it's not. So just to try to protect the logo and try to protect the district from.
And this authorization, the motion before you, is only for last year and this year. You know, going forward, they would have to apply again if they wanted to do it in the future.
So if we say no, what's the repercussion to this individual?
He would stop selling them immediately, but, you know, any that are already out there.
But would he? Because he just would probably take the logo off.
He couldn't.
I don't know that it would change anything.
He, he could do that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine it really would.
We would have to go after him for copyright infringement?
I mean, he can make signs, he can make a sign and people can purchase it to celebrate their child. It doesn't need to have the logo on it. I mean, if it does make it appear to be an official school, you know, sign that some kids are getting and other kids aren't getting, that, that seems like a problem.
It's still the kids that want them though, or get them, and the pandemic softens me to all of this a bit more. And with all of the trauma that went on, if they've got a sign that's got their school logo on it and their picture, and it's really well done, and it makes them feel better about graduating, that softens me to the whole situation because you're ultimately telling a kid, oh, did you order that sign? You can't get that sign now until Green Dragon Foundation comes up with a way of producing them. And the system's already in place and they're buying them. Right, and it's only for one year, just for this year.
How is it being marketed? Does anybody know?
I haven't seen anything.
Just on Facebook. That's my understanding.
Pardon me?
I think just on Facebook.
And do we know what the cost is? I mean, I, I'm all about entrepreneurship and I, I understand that end of it. And it'd be great for this individual to be able to make the money, but I also think that we need to protect the district from this type of thing. And I wouldn't want it to be a highly overpriced item that people think is coming from the district. That would be very disheartening. Does anybody know how much it costs?
I'm afraid I don't.
I also don't want to be in the business of picking and choosing which business we're going to allow to do something and which one not.
That's a really good point.
Have we allowed other businesses to use the logo?
We really haven't had any requests per se. We do have an official licensing through Ohio Pile Prints that they have, people can order things officially online and we receive royalties. So we do have that arrangement, but.
It feels a little bit like the horse is out of the barn and so maybe you think about, go ahead and, because he's already sort of started this year, and then next, let him know that it's, you know.
There's two different, two different signs. There's a stock sign that just has like the name and the name of the district and the logo, and those are fifteen dollars. And then there are twenty dollar ones that can be customized.
I believe his letter said that he stopped as soon as he became aware. Yeah, no, it did indicate how many he might have sold prior to that.
Handful, it's a handful. Right?
Any other discussion? So we have a motion as second. John, can we do a roll call vote?
Certainly. Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Wait, what's yes or no?
Yes would be to allow the use of the logo up through June of 2021 through this year. No would be no.
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Fosero.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
No.
Mrs. Brous.
No.
Mrs. Clark.
No.
Mr. Fetzer.
No.
Mr. Heath.
No.
And Dr. Jablonski.
No.
Okay. The vote fails. Six no, three yes, so denied.
All right, the next item is the middle school courtyard door lock repair quote.
Can we take one second to sort of, for people who would be disappointed by this decision, to kind of say, the, the real issue is exactly what Corey said, is we, it's really hard. If you have a precedent that you let it once, then you have to be super careful, right? Because then we might get more requests like this and then.
And our logo's out there for general use for everybody.
I mean, yeah, we would have to approve them, but then we're making a judgment about the type of business or which parents, you know, it's just.
Makes sense. I understand that.
And I didn't think about that because I assumed, I assumed something different because of this letter. I thought that that was already, like, it was parents asking for it and something like that. I would rather see something like this come through the Green Dragon Foundation or, like, I just feel like they're a good intermediary. And also because then if there were any kids who couldn't afford it and it wasn't things special, they would probably be able to provide for the whole class. So it looked, then it's more like a school endorsed thing.
Which is nice when it comes from Belladry because they just make them up as other signs.
Right. So I just wanted to, to put that out there because I do know this is probably just going to disappoint for some people.
And it really doesn't prevent him from doing something. He just can't use the logo.
I agree. I agree. Right.
Thank you, Ann. I think that's, that's an important note to add. So the middle school courtyard door lock repair quote.
Yes, we would ask that you approve this quote from NRG. There are two sets of doors on the middle school courtyard. I believe this may be where the ducks hang out on a regular basis. We had to repair one set of doors a couple of years ago and now the other set of doors has failed. So we would ask that you approve this quote this evening so that the other set of doors can be repaired.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Brous. Any discussion?
Will the ducks get their own fob?
Keep slipping out from under their wing.
So you say.
Roll call vote, please, John.
Certainly. Ms. Stanton.
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Fosero.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
Yeah.
Mrs. Brous.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
We're not laughing at you.
The next item is the Lindtown Fire Door Lock Repair Quote.
Can I add a, can I add something to the, the, I just want to ask because we keep changing fobs and systems. We're definitely, I know Delbert's on there. This is definitely all part of the new system, right? We're not going to be switching it.
Yeah, everything, everything is compatible with the new system.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. John, we can, can we do a roll call vote?
This is allergies, by the way, not the rhino.
He's not feeling super emotional about the rain.
Dr. Unzeker Fosero.
Yes. No, I'm just kidding. Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Brous.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and then the last item, the board action new business is the maintenance building parking area concrete proposal.
We need it.
John?
Yes, I would recommend that you approve this. Part of the back parking area is what they call cracker dust, just that small fine gravel. So every year when we're plowing, it gets moved around and it's just hard to maintain. So this will basically complete the parking area behind the maintenance building and make it easier to maintain.
Jordan was.
I didn't know that would happen. I was actually going to throw it out to Delbert. Moved by Dr. Jablonski.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion?
I'm going to ask John some questions.
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, John.
Yes. Dr. Zimmerman.
Yeah.
Mrs. Brous.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yeah.
Dr. Unzeker Fosero.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to board information under new business. The first item is the new curriculum for the 21-22 school year. Mrs. Moser?
All right, you're receiving the resources to support the curriculum for the new school year. Typically, we bring it forward here for information and then bring it back at the next meeting for your approval. I would note that they are titles for an approved reading list. They are some textbooks for approval. And what's a little bit different this year, but I think very exciting, at Spanish levels four and five, you have the initiative on the part of. At Spanish levels four and five, you have the initiative on the part of Ms. Yankowski, our teacher, to want to put some titles in place in her room for students who are at that advanced level of Spanish instruction to really read the Spanish literature and continue to refine their skills in being able to do so. To read in in the world language of Spanish. And so she's advancing the second list that you have attached tonight again for information. This meeting and I would be happy to take anyone's questions or follow up and then we'll bring it back the following meeting for your approval.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is options for the middle school HVAC unit replacements.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. So yes, we're looking at options for the various middle school HVAC units. Little bit of background, as you know, our middle school heating units are quite old and they are starting to require repairs that we have to fabricate our own parts such as control bars. They are no longer available for purchase even off of eBay. So direction is needed from the board about what direction we want to go in the event we need to replace a unit due to a malfunction that cannot be repaired. Right now, we're doing our best to patch them together, but there may come a day when we can't. So depending on pricing and quantities, these upgrades could also be eligible for SR3 federal funds. So that's just something to keep in mind. Uh, option one is what we call a direct replacement. You can see the picture there. It's basically taking the old existing under the window units out and putting a similar unit back in. Uh, option one A is heat only. Option one B includes the ability to upgrade to air conditioning at a future time. And again, it fits in place of the current units. You can see the estimated cost there below. And then option two is the new style unit, a high efficiency vertical heat pump with both heating and cooling capability. It is quieter and more efficient than the direct replacement units, but it may require some modifications to classroom structures. Because as you can see, it's a vertical cabinet and not a horizontal one like the old one. The picture here is from an installation in Southern Columbia. You can see the piping that comes out of the top there that puts the air out into the classroom. Uh, this is the unit itself over here, a picture of that. And then here's another style of that where the unit actually puts the air out into ceiling vents. So similar to what we have here in the high school, the unit could put heat and AC out into the ceiling. This is what it looks like from the outside. So there's nothing on the outside except a vent in the room there. So. So basically, we need to know what's your preference? What direction do you want us to go? And we'll, we can get quotes for replacements in the event of a failure. They can't be repaired and, you know, see if we can use some of our SR3 money.
What are the savings in going with option two, just like in your energy bill?
Um, and Delbert can also chime in here. I don't know if there's really an energy, I mean, there might be a little bit of energy savings. It's more of just a different style. You know, being a vertical heat pump instead of the horizontal direct replacement. Delbert, correct me if I'm wrong here.
Can you guys hear me?
Up, you gotta speak up there, buddy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So if we run the heating and air conditioning unit, there's not going to be that big of a saving or there's not going to be a savings with. If we just run the heating unit, the savings are going to be pretty minute compared to the units that we have in there because it's all electric. So.
If we were to switch to option two, which is a totally different kind of air conditioning unit, is the installation cost going to be much higher because you're going to have to, you're going to have to break out the wall to put in the venting?
Not necessarily. I believe they included installation. Correct me if I'm wrong, Delbert, but I believe this forty to fifty thousand does include installation, which would, you know, include adjusting the vents because right now we do, the UNIVents do have an exterior ventilation. So it would just be a question of shifting that and I believe that's included, right, Delbert?
Correct.
Oh, that's surprising.
When you talk about rearranging the classrooms, then is that, that's not structural change? That's just a organizing the way the rooms are currently set up with cabinets and stuff like that?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. So realistically, you're not going to lose cabinet space because you have a top. The heater now dispenses the heat from the top, so there's no shelf space there. The only thing you could potentially lose is a window with the ceiling to floor unit.
I, I don't know. I have struggle with believing that there wouldn't be significant modifications required in a room. I would, I mean, this is one of those times when it might be worth it for us to take a field trip because I think that there might be.
Well, if you, if you, if you look at the picture, the first picture that John showed, it, it pretty much takes the place of your UNIVent. So everything is on the inside and everything self-contained to the outside.
Yeah. And, and the folks from McClure who provided us these rough estimates, they have been to the middle school. They've been to every single classroom. They have looked at it. You know, they've done measurements. They've, you know, when they, when they propose these estimates, they've been around our building. So I believe they, they have a good handle on what would be required to put them in. If we decide the option two.
Yeah, I guess the biggest thing too is if you want this, if, if you were to direct us to try to go with this unit, the, the ceiling to floor. If you wanted it to replace the UNIVent that it currently has in the same spot, there's not a lot of modifications because it goes in the same spot. If you want us to move it into a corner, then we would have to redo like the cabinetry and the storage and everything that goes below it. So, I mean, that's another, you know, another thing too, is if you didn't want it in the center of the room, you could move it into a corner and then all the ductwork would just come out of one side versus going above the ceiling and having ceiling diffusers blowing the cold air and the heat.
How many classrooms have just the one window?
It, it really depends on the classroom that you go into. When, when the district did the energy savings project before I got here, basically half the windows were covered with insulation. So we lost half the windows in the classrooms. So depending on where the UNIVent is, some classrooms already have that space covered and some, some classrooms don't have that space covered.
What do you think, Delbert? Which one do you like?
I mean, me personally, I, I like the, the option two. I really feel like it's a good fit for, for all the buildings, but you know, if we're looking at costs and stuff too, I mean, option one A and one, or one, the two first options are pretty decent as well too.
Option one B. What would it cost to upgrade it to AC? I mean, it's forty.
Uh, it's built in, so it's pretty, it contains all the mechanics.
Why would we go with that? Because that's the design that was already designed for the building. That makes more sense.
Uh, it, you could do that. I mean, correctly if I'm wrong, Delbert, but I believe the option one B, when we do upgrade to AC would pretty much be a question of just turning on a switch. I mean.
Yeah, the, the air conditioner is already, the air conditioner is already there. It's just a question of, again, you know, if you do five classrooms versus the whole school, what classrooms do you do and who gets the AC or you leave the unit off until every classroom is, you know, retrofitted. But yeah, option one B comes with air, air conditioning, the capacity for air conditioning already built in. It's just a matter of turning it on and setting the set point to cool the room.
But that's true of option two as well, correct?
Yes, option one B and two both have air conditioning already built in. Uh, it's just a question when we would activate it.
But you won't have to disturb or remove a window with option one B. Right?
True, that's a, just a direct replacement with the unit.
I wouldn't want to give up a window in a classroom.
Just, just as a question, these, all the exterior rooms, because we do have interior rooms that don't have any windows as well too. Delbert, I'm not sure with the, which ones are the most critical? I mean, I know we have some that are.
Well, the, the issue with, with the issue with, the issue with diagnosing criticality on electric units is when somebody were to come in, if somebody were to come in and look at them like McClure or even Siemens, you know, some of the units they looked at, you know, they said are in really good condition, you know, because of the care that the district has taken over the years. But you don't, I mean, that, I mean, but then the unit could fail the next day just because of the age of the unit. So it could look good. So, you know, John and I were talking, the, the best way to do is just to kind of decide on a pod or design on a place to start, decide on a place to start. And then maybe just do a rotation and just start moving around the building per pod. Because it's really hard to diagnose when a unit is actually going to go bad because of, of how they look when you take them apart. They all look pretty much the same. But you don't know how delicate some of the wires could be over the years of, of use. The one thing with option two is I was, I'm remembering this as we talked, the high efficiency heat pump. So it uses the heat pump first and then it'll use the, the electricity heat as, as a backup. So when you have warmer days where it's not calling for, for as much heat, you're using the heat pump versus the, um, the actual electric heat. So that, that's one thing where you could, you could have a little bit more savings versus the other two. But, I mean, as far as how much the savings are, again, if we're using the air conditioning in the, in the summer months or spring and fall, then you're, you're, you're probably going to be evening yourself out or maybe even losing a little bit.
The heat pump is a more efficient and cost effective way to heat and cool, right?
It definitely is. It's just a matter of if there are unforeseen, which we tend to have great luck with, unforeseen issues of installation that cost way more than any potential savings on electricity, we would be like in the red on the whole, on the whole idea, right?
So since we're talking about it now, could they come and look and tell us what those would be, those unexpected?
I, I mean, they've, they've given us a rough estimate, but they're not really willing to come give us a firm quote until we tell them what we want. You know what I mean?
Isn't it also true that while we might lose a window or something like that, doesn't putting the stand up unit also create the opportunity to actually create more space? More space or, and our storage?
That's true. You could have more, I mean, it's not as wide as the previous UNIVent, so you would have more shelving, you know, in that area.
But I would also recommend that the evaluation of which get replaced and what order and when and where AC gets turned on, that we have a little more of a study on that than just the installation of the equipment because there are other factors to consider when turning on AC in the building. It's not just the units. There's um, just the electricity and everything else that we have to do that. So.
And, and we'll be coming back to the board with, with further proposals and further information. We just need this general guidance of which path should be set out.
Purchase any of these units. We're not buying anything. This is simply to say.
Yeah.
Company, we're going to, we want to work with, let's say if it's option two, they now know, okay, it's going to be option two and then they can fill in the blanks of the installation and.
They can go into each room and say, what will it take to put this unit in here? You know, how does that affect windows? How does that affect shelving? You know?
And if we find out that option two is cost prohibitive or there's all kinds of complications, we can bring this back with.
Right. And it doesn't have to be just.
Do it tomorrow.
It also doesn't just have to be one solution, right? These are individual units. So they could, if, if one whole area makes sense because they've already blocked off a window, you throw in the vertical units. Great. We haven't sacrificed anything. But if there's another area where it only makes sense to do direct replacement, like I don't see these as either or. I see a study and then we decide, actually, there's, I'm going to make this up. Let's say there's, I don't know, twenty classrooms and nine of them make sense to do direct replacement because it's going to be such a load of work to change positions of everything and the rest can get high efficiency pumps.
Yeah.
And then how long do we have to use those SR3 funds if this is a suitable cost to use?
I think it goes to September of 2023, I believe.
Twenty twenty-three. Okay. So then we do have time.
A little bit of time. Yes, yes, absolutely. And, and, and we can definitely go back to McClure and say, look at each individual room and tell us, you know, what you would recommend. But I'm getting a sense from the board that you would want to have the AC capability, uh, whether we go with one B or option two, depending on what's the best fit for a particular room. Is that a fair statement? Okay. Yeah, I.
Sorry, I'm not, sorry, can I jump in here real quick?
Sure.
Um, this does not still address the electrical issues though at all, correct?
That's Lindtown.
Yeah, no, that's, Lindtown is where we would have to upgrade the electrical for AC.
I thought, I, I thought that we had issues with the electrical system at, at the middle school as well with plugging in and things. No?
Were critical at Lindtown. There might be some things to take a look at, at, um, right now.
Okay, I, I apologize. I had the two schools next up then. That's great. Right?
And, and that would obviously be part of our evaluation if for some unknown reason, you know, the, the middle school electrical system did need tweaks or something, that would obviously be part of the proposal.
Yeah. And, and I mean, going through the initial walkthrough to the units that McClure did kind of look at when we walked through here recently. They were actually looking, they looked at voltage, wattage and everything for the units that are, that are currently installed. So, um, the units that they're proposing should be, um, be a direct replacement where there's, there is an additional electricity required, additional power required because they're, they were looking at all that stuff to ensure that they didn't need to up the power, make sure that there was enough power coming into the building and going to the rooms as well.
The areas that are air conditioned now in middle school, they have option one B units?
No.
What, what units?
They have, there are some, uh, small, I believe, rooftop units, some small outside units. Um, they're individual systems. Yeah, individual window systems. So they're completely separate.
There's about four, five, or there's about, I would say about six different types of units at the middle school.
Yeah.
What's one more? If we can replace window units, right? Like what are we doing with window units now?
Yeah. So, all right, yeah, we'll go back to the, the folks in McClure and we'll, we'll find out a best fit for each of our rooms, whether between option one B or option two and we'll figure out the next steps forward and bring that back to you at an appropriate time. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is the Board President's Report. I'm going to skip that this evening. Uh, this is Moser. I'll turn it over to you.
I have a brief oral report for you tonight, but I do want to bring forward for your awareness. We have fourteen middle school students who will be attending the seven SUN ATI camps. The SUN camps in traditional summers have operated when school was out. For us, the camp week is our last week of school this year. But we're working with these students to make this opportunity available to them. And, uh, we've been able to use some of the lifting up Lewisburg funds to help defray the costs for some of our students. And we're just very glad that we can continue to offer this early exploratory opportunity for middle school students to take a good look at SUN and the programs that are there. I appreciate our middle school counselors and Mr. Drosen helping to make that available to them. I also wanted to just briefly call attention to two other programs. Our pre-K camps classroom operated this school year in our most unique year. We've just received the indication that we will be renewed for our funding to continue the program in the coming year. And even though we were under enrolled, uh, our eighteen student classroom had just twelve students in it this year. Our teacher and our aide have done, uh, an outstanding job tailoring education for three and four year olds under all the safety and mitigation, uh, guidelines that we've had to follow. They were able to creatively still provide remote instruction when the district went that way. Imagine the engagement effort to keep three and four year olds in touch with the teacher. And, uh, both Ms. Brockway and Mrs. Ross have worked very hard every day to replace what would normally be carpet time and circle time and centers time and still design all of that that our students could have a very successful, uh, learning experience this year. Next year, we'll work again to be a full enrollment of eighteen students, uh, learning with us during a full day program. And lastly, our SAC program continues to operate, school age childcare before school and after school. Our Wednesday afternoons remain especially very busy to accommodate our students and families. We are able to open and operate summer SAC again this summer after not being able to operate this past summer. So that's another very positive sign, if you will, and the staff that worked very hard to prepare that program have been working with venue sites for field trips that are reopening and allowing school groups to come again. We're happy this week to learn that the community pool intends to open so that again, that part of summer can happen again for the students who participate in summer. so that again, that part of summer can happen again for the students who participate in summer SAC. We'll be able to run summer SAC from the moment school closes till we take in again, of course, in, in mid-August. So I share that with you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Fetzer.
Thank you. We'll move on to board liaising committee reports.
Last one, Matt, kind of business as usual, you're in, things going on. We had our award ceremony yesterday, it was very nice. Students got some nice awards from area businesses and, and certain other people donated things. Also, our graduation will be on May twenty-sixth down to Shikohami football field. So we're gonna be having it outdoors and at least we're able to have it in person this year. And Jen, have you heard? I think they're just gonna limit it to the superintendents. I know, I haven't talked to Jen Haynes, who's gonna be allowed to go. I know previous years when we had Susquehanna, or anybody could go, but I'm not sure if there are restrictions.
They, they were going to look at the number of tickets and in terms of having the executive JOC be there, I believe that they would be there as well, too. But Jen may be getting updates from Shikohami School District, given the governor's relaxation of some of these restrictions that we have, so.
So if anyone would want to go, let me know and I'll see, you know, if you can, maybe you can carpool down or something. I know we had carpool in previous years. Thank you.
You have the IU report in your agenda. They gave out some awards, some professional awards, which were, it was really neat to hear them talking about the different staff members and all the work that they do. And there's actually a link to that if you all want to look at it. Anything else is in there?
The alumni association met, again, nothing too unusual. Most of the times when they meet and coincides with our board meetings, this was the first time that, that it, since Dr. Polanczak was in the district, that it did not coincide. So she was able to join. And I know they were excited to, to meet her virtually and have her join, so thanks for joining, Matt. Any other reports? I will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to have removed and voted upon separately? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the revised personnel report?
So move.
Thank you.
Moved by Mrs. Browse, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please, John?
Yes, Mrs. Browse.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yeah.
Dr. Enziger Fosero. Doesn't appear she's on the call anymore. Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to director's comments. Mary Ann, you're putting your head down.
You know, the dock lanes, like, just every year makes my day. I feel like I need to pop over there next year. Just, you know, everything that y'all are doing with spring activities, it's just so great to feel like there's some semblance of normal coming back in all of the buildings. Seeing the kids outside, you know, knowing that they're feeling a little like things are back to normal. And, you know, I got that email from Paula that had all the activities that are happening for seniors and there are a lot. And that is just, you know, guys are doing just an amazing job with these kids. Just thank you all so much. And also, I wanted to say something about the pre-K counts teachers because that's just like a special kind of rock star to be doing what they're doing under the current circumstances, all of the teachers, but with little ones that are hard to ground up under normal circumstances. I just, wow, that's a, thank you.
Mathletes, you know, you're doing something right when a student says, I'm really gonna miss math next year. So kudos to that whole program.
I was really excited to hear about the math and poetry month. That's just really neat and I'm looking forward to hearing how they make it even better next year. I know that there's at least one person in my house who will be very excited to hear about the disco. So that's good news. Thanks Kathy for bringing forward the wonderful curriculum resources. Those are all texts I'm familiar with and so delighted to see those in our schools. And it's really exciting to imagine the kids being proficient enough in Spanish to read all those books in Spanish. So that's great. And also a welcome to Mr. Popwiz, is that correct?
I echo all of that and then I just wanted to add that I think it's great that we're able to open the summer SAC this year. You know, it was definitely missed by the community last year, so it will be, everyone will be very excited that it's back in place.
Mary?
Well, I guess there's not too much for me to report on, but I like to know what everybody said and I just like to take my hands off to the administrators and, and all the administration for such a difficult year and a half that we've had. I think you've all done a great job and our staff has come through. It's been very trying for them and cumbersome, but we've got through this and we did. So hopefully, things will open up a lot more. We'll get back to what we know is normal. But I'd like to congratulate the achievers we recognized tonight. Thank you.
John?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing there.
Yeah, I want, I was excited to hear about the mathletes and about the TSA competition. Virtual is a hard way to do TSA. I'm very familiar, I've been at those events before, so good for them. I have to say, it's so interesting, we get the reports from the principals because I hear about this from my kids and my mom, who is like the unofficial neighborhood watch. So Wednesday, she said, all these students and teachers were walking through our neighborhood. I guess, might, maybe to go over to VR, VR. Do you have any idea what that was about? And I said, no, actually, I don't know. But then that night, I went for a walk and the dragon path had been painted and we both noticed, my friend and I both noticed right away. So it's just these little things that you see that you're like, oh, it's really nice that someone repainted the dragon path. So the math and poetry month was a huge deal in my house. Haikus all the time. I had to do laundry, so my daughter, who never wears anything but leggings, had a pair of pants with pockets for the pocket poetry day. I mean, that's a really big deal that she was that invested. And, and my son loved the estimation jars, like these things, Mrs. Kostick and Mrs. Rosenberg, to do these things for the kids to just have them like light up. My kids really got into it this year. And we all wore green on Mental Health Thursday. So that was another laundry night I had to do in my house to make sure everyone had the green that they needed. So thank you just to the teachers for doing these things that seem small, but I love hearings. I hear it from my, from my kids and sort of through the grapevine, but then you report on it and it's, you know, all the effort that went into behind the scenes.
Cory?
I just want to say that every day is haiku day at my house.
That's what I thought.
Nothing, nothing.
I just wanted to share, it was great to be at the SUN Tech Gov certificate ceremony that they have with your awards that the students received. When you think about just in regular school, how hard it is to be in person and some of the challenges we go through, there, those kids are all hands-on and there's really, it's so difficult for them to get the skills that they need without being there with their teachers, learning from each other and be able to put their hands on the, the different technologies that they're working with, wood, stone, whatever it might be. So what an accomplishment for all the students that were able to persevere. I know they had a lot of bumps and bruises throughout the year, more so than we did. But, you know, really hats off to Jen Haynes for what she's been able to accomplish with her teachers for the students. I do have to note that the one student in the one shop that won the best attendance award was actually absent that day. You know, what a good time to be absent after they already did the tabulation. But, you know, I'm sure it was for a legitimate reason. Also wanted to just give a shout out to our PSA. You know, they're really working closely with both Jeremiah and Chris on the Dragon Dash Field Day, other things that they would, you know, sponsor and help to put together to really get our backing and support for if we have either spectators or parents volunteering, what needs to be followed, what communications they're gonna put out to the people that are gonna participate. So really appreciate them, you know, working with us on that, also investing all that time to make sure that some of these things continue to happen because they're great for the kids, but this is also a way for, you know, parents and kids to again be able to reengage in activities at the school. And it's, it's getting a little bit closer to normal. It'll be a little while till we're over the hump there and probably look very much like this for the rest of the school year. But more things are opening up and, you know, we appreciate everybody's support with just following through with the strategies that we need to have in place until, you know, we finally reach that point that we can get rid of our masks. And as I look at Mary Ann and she and I both have the same mask, we're, we're shout out to Lisa Peroni for making, look at how they're holding up. Because last year, I'm gonna be sad to put this away. I don't think I'll burn this one, but just in case, yeah, you never know. You know, we'll lock this one up in a nice drawer, in case it might have to get pulled out again. Thank you.
All right, and I will just conclude. I did owe a lot of the things that were said and it's just exciting to continue to hear even after a year now of all the different ways that we're doing things, but still managing to do that. So it's awesome to hear all of those. John, any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items?
All right, we'll take a look here. No, no comments to the board on non-agenda items.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Clark, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting adjourned.